Good evening and welcome to the September 13th, 2022 regular meeting of the City of Troy Planning Commission. Capes of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission.
State law establishes planning commissions. This planning commission is comprised of nine residents appointed to serve our community. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. Other individuals participating in the meeting include representatives of the city's planning department, city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle-Wartman Associates.
If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward at the appropriate time to the lectern when recognized and clearly print your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission itself and not to anyone else in the room. If you have a cell phone or any other device that might disrupt the meeting, please either silence it or switch it to the off position. At this time, I'll ask the Planning Commission Recording Secretary Kathy Zarnicki to conduct the roll call.
Mr. Beigner?
Here.
Mr. Faizan?
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Krant?
Here.
Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Ms. Malala-Hali?
Here.
Ms. Parakis?
Here.
Mr. Ronan?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Here.
Form present, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next, be open to a motion from the Commission to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll do it.
Mr. Krant makes the motion. Is there a second by Mr. Beigner? Ready for the roll call.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krant?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Malala-Hali?
Yes.
Ms. Parakis?
Yes.
Mr. Ronan?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Beigner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is the motion to approve the minutes of the August 23rd meeting. Is there any motion to that effect? Mr. Tagle makes a motion. Is there a second? Ms. Parakis makes a second. Any amendments to the minutes? Any corrections? Seeing none, we're ready for the roll call.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krant?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Malala-Hali?
Yes.
Ms. Parakis?
Yes.
Mr. Ronan?
Abstained.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Beigner?
Abstained.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment for items not on the agenda tonight. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the Commission for items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, then we will move on to a public hearing. But before that, I believe Mr. Tagle needs to make a statement on the one item on the agenda.
Yes, I'd like to advise the Commission that our company is working for Robertson Brothers right now, helping them remodel their office. We have no affiliation or association with this project. I advised the Commission last time it was in front of us, but I just wanted again to advise you and see if you feel that it'd be appropriate that I sit in on this. And I feel that I can look at this in an unbiased way.
It's good to participate as far as I'm concerned.
No one has a concern with Mr. Tagle's participation?
Yep.
Seeing no one objecting, you are participating then, so. And with that, the public hearing on the planned unit development, file number PUD 019JPLN 2022-0013. This is a proposed village of Troy PUD, which is on the south side of Long Lake, west of Rochester. Parcels 88-20-15-201-046 and 88-20-15-201-033, Section 15. Currently zoned RT, which is one-family attached residential, R1C, one-family residential, and CB, community business district. And I believe Mr. Sevigny will be doing the presentation this evening.
Yes, I'm flying solo this evening. It's the first time I've done that in a while, so be patient.
We'll be kind to you.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the introduction. This is a planned unit development. It's kind of a strange term, planned unit development. It's enabled through state enabling legislation. We also call it a PUD. A PUD is a negotiated process, again, allowed by state law. In some communities, it's reviewed and approved by special use approval. In Troy, it's rezoning. And again, it's negotiated. Basically, the zoning ordinance provisions are put aside, and everything is negotiable in a PUD. In Troy, it's a three-step process. The first step is conceptual development plan approval, where the concept is approved and the property is rezoned. The second step is preliminary development approval, where the detailed site plan is proposed. And the third step is final approval, which is final engineering. However, for projects that are either smaller in size or smaller in scope, or the developer knows exactly what they want, we have in the past allowed for bundling of the concept plan and the preliminary development plan together. So it's two steps in one, which is what the applicant is proposing this evening, because they know exactly what they want. They're not seeking any flexibility that's kind of flushed out generally, conceptually in a concept plan, and then seeking something different, or they want the market to change or what have you. They know exactly what they want, so they're bundling the concept and the preliminary development plan together. Does anyone have any questions on that? Okay. Again, we've done that in the past for other developments. So with that being said, that's a quick and dirty primer on a planned unit development. But for this project, it is located on south side of Long Lake, west Rochester Road. It's slightly larger than 20 acres in size, and this is a mixed-use development, but all of the different uses are residential. There's three different residential types proposed. So let's talk about the site in terms of natural features. There are four wetlands on the site. Three of them are what's known as non-regulated wetlands, so they don't require review and approval by Eagle, which is formerly known as Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. But there is about a .7 acre wetland that's located over here. Thank you. This is a much better laser pointer here. Over here. And it's part of a wetland area that goes down here, and it's greater than five acres in area. So it is considered to be, it's going to require review and approval by the state of Michigan, by Eagle. But that's taken care of during final site plan approval. It's really not something we have to worry about this evening. But there are a number of trees on the site. There are over 600 trees surveyed. And if you look at the tree list, most of them are species that really aren't great. They're actually prohibited species in the city. What I mean by prohibited is if an applicant were to propose a planting plan, most of the trees on this site, we would not allow them to be planted, because they've got, there's negative qualities, like ash trees, which are susceptible to hemorrhage or ash borers, or elm trees, which are susceptible to Dutch elm disease, et cetera. So most of the trees are of poor quality, although I'm not suggesting there's not value in having trees. Just, these are not your quality trees. But they did identify 10 landmark trees on the site. In total, at the end of the day, based on the landscape plan that was provided, the applicant is required to replace 552 inches of trees, and they're proposing 555 inches of trees. There was some confusion on the landscape plan regarding the calculations. They did provide a spreadsheet to the department on Friday. We haven't had a chance to review, but if this moves forward, we will do that prior to going to city council. But there's a pretty high confidence level that this is accurate. Again, we'll verify that. This is a zoning map. You see that most of the site, approximately 15 acres of the 20, is zoned RT, one-family attached. Property to the southwest is zoned R1C, one-family residential, and there's a little pocket to the east that's zoned CB, community business. And in total, the applicant is proposing 146 units on the site. These are to be for sale units. Three different housing types. I'll show you a slide that differentiates in a second, but there are 20 detached, single-family homes, 56 attached, single-family homes. These are two-story over here. And then the southern portion includes 70 attached townhomes, which are three stories in height. Access is from Long Lake Road or Rochester Road, so two points of ingress and ingress for the site. And here's a breakdown, again, over in the northwest portion of the site. 20 units proposed, two options. One is an 1,800 square foot ranch, or two-story colonial units ranging from 1,900 to 3,100 square feet in size. We've got the attached, single-family homes, two-story over here. To the east, 56 units. These are 1,600 square feet, and they provide for the option of a two- or three-bedroom unit, and includes an attached two-car garage. Then finally, here, the southern portion of the site, 70 units. They range in size from 1,200 square feet to 1,350 square feet with private attached garages. The land use plan, we all know it's a conceptual future land use plan, and it shows the neighborhood node on the corner as the circle. But also in this area, there's property classified as Rochester Road, and also property classified as single-family residential. As you are all aware, the Planning Commission has spent a lot of time recently discussing the neighborhood node concept, and what types of uses and development patterns should be featured in the nodes. We did consider a concept drawing at the January 11th Planning Commission meeting. There was considerable discussion on this item. We tried to capture what was discussed, and hopefully we did this accurately based on the minutes of the meeting. I'll just go through these, because it is important. We discussed public amenities, specifically the safety, liability, and maintenance of the proposed sledding hill. That's located just to the west of the three-story units. We discussed the public trailway connection through the DPW property to the south and connecting to Long Lake Road. There was consideration of maybe an alternate amenity, maybe something all-season use. We discussed the regional stormwater detention basin that's proposed to the south of this site. We discussed housing options. There was some suggestions by many members of the Planning Commission that townhomes were not a preferable housing type. We discussed sustainable elements of the housing material, transition to the adjacent industrial use. It's a tough site here in terms of that DPW yard. And I've heard it described as kind of a wasteland back there, and there's a salt dome that has a lot of activity, a lot of noise at night, and it's very industrial in nature. So that is a challenge moving forward. And there was discussion of a villaging concept for the project. We'll get into that in a little bit here. So since that concept was seen by the Planning Commission in January, there's been some changes. They reoriented the layout of the townhomes. They reduced the number of units from 182 to 146. That's, what, 36 units less? So that's resulted in a decrease in density from a little less than nine units per acre to a little more than seven units per acre. So pretty considerable in terms of density. And they added a central village commons park area, really by the, down here, by the townhome units, the three-story units. They added three pocket parks in the attached, single-family townhome community. They added four open space areas in the attached, single-family home neighborhood. They added an emergency vehicle access here, connecting single-family residential. And I misspoke, but they actually eliminated some units here and made this more of a park feature. And they added two additional guest parking spaces. So that summarizes the changes. You can actually go in the agenda packet and make a comparison if you like. So the applicant did maintain the townhomes located down here in the south, along that property line with the DPW. Again, there's some challenges there with that yard that's to the south. The Planning Commission did, again, mention the villaging concept, which Ben and I talked about it, and we interpreted that to mean, and you can obviously correct us if I'm wrong, but three things. One, a mix of housing options, possibly some non-residential uses, an orientation of housing types around a common and functional open space that allows for greater resident interaction, and finally, consideration of an alternate amenity, possibly all-season use, more centrally located. That was our interpretation of the villaging concept, but again, we're here tonight to talk about it. And one of the questions for the Planning Commission is, did the applicant sufficiently redesign this to reflect the villaging concept that we talked about? So in terms of deviations, again, they're proposing three different use types. So we looked at it from the perspective of, you know, if the applicant were to try to deliver this under conventional zoning, what deviations would be necessary? So there would be deviation from the required front and rear yard setbacks for the single-family residential component. There's a 25-foot front required, and they go down to 20 feet. There's a 15-foot side yard, and they go down to 13 feet, so not really significant. For the attached, single-family, the two-story, there's another reduction, deviation from 25-foot front to 20-foot front, and from a 35-foot rear to a 30-foot rear. Again, these deviations are somewhat minor, and they're more internal to the residents. And finally, for the three-story units, the underlying RT zoning district allows two and a half stories, 30 feet, and they're proposing three stories, 35 feet for all of the three-story townhomes. So in terms of access and circulation, again, access is provided to the site from Rochester Road and Long Lake Road. There's no direct access to the attached, single-family residential neighborhood. And what this means is, if you live in here, you come off Rochester Road, pass commercial uses, and then enter here. But really, what this is referring to is typically, single-family residential is at the back of a development. You put the more dense near the front, but in this case, visitors would come, enter the site through, single-family residential before arriving at the more dense, two-family residential. And we do anticipate that a significant number of visitors to the site will do that. In terms of parking, there's two spaces proposed per unit, plus guest parking. The requirement for parking for the entire site, and this factors in parking in garages and parking in front of garages, but there's 292 spaces required, and there's 446 spaces provided, not including the parking at the sledding hill, if you include that. There's 457 spaces provided, only 292 required. Now, if this were to be a site plan, that was where we apply the site plan review standards, because it's, again, this is a PUD, and everything's negotiable. But if this weren't a PUD, the applicant would need to justify the excess parking above 20%. And what we do ask is that the applicant explain it to the Planning Commission, so we can kind of wrap our heads around why there's more parking provided. You'll notice that a lot of that parking is here, along a DPW property. That's where a lot of that access is. In terms of traffic, there was a traffic review that was prepared by Fleiss and Vandenberg, also known as F&amp;V, dated June 22nd. Our traffic consultant, OHM, reviewed the traffic study. They approved the recommendations of the traffic study with two comments. One is that the proposed left-hand turn lane and other changes on Long Lake Road must be reviewed and approved by the Road Commission for Oakland County. So a lot of the approvals are deferred to Road Commission for Oakland County. We'll get into that during final site plan approval. They also asked for crash analysis for the intersection at Rochester and Glazer. F&amp;V did provide crash analysis, and it was determined by the city engineer that the crash analysis provided did not require further analysis. And I would note that Steve Deering from OHM is here, who can answer any, he's the expert in traffic, and he can answer any questions that you've got related to the study or their review of this application. The applicant provided elevations for all three units in the site. The materials include brick, board, and batten, vinyl siding. I would note that the front elevations, especially for the single-family units, provide architectural detail, and they provide porches and overhangs that provide some visual interest and reduce monotony for the site, which is a good thing. And the applicant provided this drawing to kind of differentiate between the different housing types for the three different segments of the development. So in terms of standards, Section 11.03B lists the standards, and what it says is, the applicant shall demonstrate that through the use of the PUD option, the development will achieve a sufficient number of objectives. There's no magic number here. It's sufficient number of objectives. So there are 18 standards in total. These are some standards that we think may be applicable to this. A mixture of land uses that would otherwise not be permitted without the use of the PUD. Compliance with the master plan. A recognizable and material benefit to the ultimate uses of the project and to the community. A compatible mixture of open space, landscape areas, and/or pedestrian amenities. Appropriate land use transitions between the PUD and surrounding properties. Design features and techniques such as green building and low-impact design, which will promote and encourage energy conservation and sustainable development. Innovative and creative site and building design solutions and materials. And finally, a complementary variety of housing types that's in harmony with adjacent uses. So I went over the deviations at a prior slide. I'm not going to repeat them, but these are a list of some of the benefits that we think may be applicable to this development. Meeting the intent of the city's master plan. Inclusion of ADA, which is Americans with Disabilities Act. Accessible sidewalks to provide for community connectivity. Multiple housing options for residents that are currently underserved. Quality architecture and design that will complement and further enhance the area. Open space throughout the site. Unified community with an association to maintain common areas. Contribution to a regional stormwater solution. Linkage to pedestrian pathway system in Trailhead. And the sledding hill and open space accessible to the public but maintained by the HOA. So for summary, some questions for the Planning Commission for this application. This is my final slide. First question, does the application meet the intent and standards of the PUD development? I went over the standards earlier. Is the mix of attached townhomes, attached single-family homes, and detached, single-family homes, I should say homes, not hoes, appropriate? I'll blame Ben for that typo, even though it's mine. Are the proposed benefits commensurate with the relief requested? Are materials and architectural details appropriate? And finally, has the applicant sufficiently redesigned the site and provided a villaging concept as previously requested by the Planning Commission? I can answer any questions you have, Mr. Chairman. Again, Steve Deering from OHM is here, and I would note the applicant has provided a PowerPoint, and they'd like to briefly describe the project.
Thank you. Before I turn it over to the Commission, can you maybe explain both the Commission, who probably already knows, but to anyone watching in the audience or on video, what the role of the Planning Commission is in the PUD process here?
Well, thank you. Yeah, thank you. I should have been clearer on my introduction. The Planning Commission is an integral part of the PUD process. They're involved in the give-and-take, the back-and-forth with the negotiation. Ultimately, as I indicated earlier, the planned unit developments in Troy are rezonings, and as a rezoning, must go to city council for final approval. So the role of the Planning Commission moving forward is to make a recommendation on this application. Then it goes before the city council at another public hearing for them to either approve or deny the application.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sevigny? No questions? Okay, then I guess we're ready for the petitioner to come up and introduce themselves and make sure you sign in on the sign-in sheet there.
Well, hello again. Tim Lockren, Robertson Brothers Homes. You probably recall, earlier this year, we were in front of you with a similar plan for the site. We received a lot of good feedback from you. Usually, I like to say, it's great, go ahead and submit and start building, but I know that's not the case. But we really did get a lot of good feedback from you. We took a lot of time to reconsider the plan and hopefully present to you what we think is really meeting the intent of the master plan, the PUD, et cetera. Couple things we heard from you. We heard too many units, particularly with the townhomes. So we cut out 40% of them. We did that by converting about half of them to a two-car version, a larger two-car version. They were all one car before. And that actually created yet another tool for us in this whole village concept. It provided yet another price point to further what I know you, as a commission, had wanted from the project, and what we want as well. We want multiple price points, attainable housing through having that move-up buyer. And we think we've really provided that as far as product and integrated into an overall plan. So we're happy to present to you and get your feedback again. So the village concept is very important. It's a component that you had wanted to see us further in the plan. And we did that also by adding significant and purposeful open space. We have a number of areas with open space now. We actually have seven pocket parks. We have, I think, a very unique, large, usable, central park, and we've thoughtfully placed that, and actually, all of the pocket parks in general, for use by the residents. We're still retaining the, I'm going to call it a quasi-public sledding hill/overlook at the southwest corner. Brent had talked about some of the reasons for that. You know, this would be quasi-public. We're proposing to have the HOA maintain it. I know that was something that you had expressed as a concern. I know the city does not want another park there. I completely understand. It makes sense to keep that as open space. It is right by the salt dome, so we would like to screen that, which is one of the reasons for the sledding hill, if you will. But it's also an overlook. It's at the foot of the entrance to the public path on our project. So we think it's a very important overall area of the overall plan. And we also retain the very important, we think the very important component, which is the pedestrian pathway. So this pathway slices through the project. It's an integral part of the project. It's something that we've really envisioned from day one, I have to say. Brent and his team have I have to say, Brent and his team have helped us envision that from day one. We've worked with city staff, engineering, public works, to discuss, A, the creation of a regional detention pond, but which will also feature the connection of this public path as it goes to the west. We love it because it's amenity for our homeowners. It's amenity for the public to use, and it'll be amenity really to connect the two kind of disparate areas of the city's public path. And we're really happy to be a component of it and have a nice, in the future, access to the schools and to the parks that are obviously to the south of us. So, we think that's a really important and great component of the plan. And the other part of, again, the public amenities, if you will, is we really wanted to centralize the open space and provide it as amenity for all, really connectivity, kind of nodes, if you will, from one open space to another. And again, I mentioned furthering along the movement on the regional pond, we have met with staff, that is moving forward. We would be a large component of that, but it's serving the existing DPW yard right now, an existing single-family neighborhood, and then three future projects, hopefully three future projects, one of them being us. So, that's just sort of an overview. I'll go through some slides. Some of it Brent had already kind of touched on, so I'll go as fast as I can on some of those areas. Just for reference, it's just over 20 acres. Does have three separate zoning categories. Most of it is zoned RT. RT is, it has a underlying density, if you will, of 8.7 units per acre. In fact, if you're familiar with our Bradley Square project, which is about a quarter-mile south of here on the east side, that is at 8.7 units per acre, that development. And the overall density that we're proposing is 7.13. So, homes are 146. We showed you a lot more than that last time. I think it was 187, if I'm not mistaken. Still the same number, single-family, 20. Essentially the same, attached single-family. And those really are attached single-family. I know there was some kind of discussion as far as how is that different than a townhome? I will show you. We consider it very different from town. We think this really slots in, you know, for that first-time buyer, but also maybe a move-up buyer as well, that has a family, young kids, that sort of thing. So, something you don't have much of in Troy, and I think it's really something, because of the cost of everything today, makes sense to have that product in your city. And then 70 townhomes, again, we had considerably more than that before. And there are purposes for that, and I will go through that as we discuss. They're all owner-occupied, nothing's for rent. And again, it's really, it's three main different types of products, really four penetrations, if you will, four price points. About 40% of the site is either active or passive recreational open space. That's a lot. I mean, it's something that we think is a great component of the plan, something that is considerably more than when you had seen this last time. So, we've increased quite a bit of that. Unit sizes, they range from 1,300 to 3,100 square feet. So, you can just see, there's a lot of options for people, which seeks to meet that village concept. A lot of words here, but there's a lot to this project. Again, all owner-occupied, you know, single-family and missing middle. And I know that's a buzz term in planning. I'm a planning commissioner. I hear those buzzwords. But it's true. It is something that, there's just not much of it. I know there's been townhomes. I understand it in the city. But there are people that want to live in missing-middle homes, and that's something we're providing here. You can see the numbers there as far as what the taxes are. Obviously, it's not generating much in taxes today. It's just sitting there. It's been sitting there for decades. Three and a half acres is what the sledding hill and trailhead would be. And then we also have the Central Park amenity with a fountain and seven pocket parks, as I mentioned. 6,000 lineal feet of sidewalk, and importantly, 2,000 lineal feet of trail and pathway that is on our dime, and it is open to the public. It's very unique, I think, and Troy, I haven't seen much of this in many communities, to be honest, but it provides for those multiple price points. It is cleaning up a blighted former fill site. It is blighted, that's been designated as that. Basically, I think this was the dumping yard for all of the freeways in the area, the entire hall of I-75 is buried there. So, there's a reason why 20 acres is sitting in Troy. I know it's just, you know, a component of what we're dealing with on the plan. Walkable community, connection, as I mentioned, to the future city path system with a trailhead. So, we do a parking area for the trailhead. We would be providing EV charging outlets in every garage. That's a Robertson standard, as a matter of fact. And then sustainable elements, you know, we can get into some of that, but appliances, Energy Star appliances. We build 10, 15, 20% above code, building code. So, you know, that's important to us, and we're building in some communities that certainly have a lot of interest in sustainability. Appropriate mix of residential land uses, and this is a targeted growth area. If you look at your master plan, if you look at the existing zoning, and if you just kind of look at the area, this is definitely a growth-targeted location. Housing options that are vastly underserved, they just are. There is demand for this. And you know who we are, so I don't need to go into that. Site context. So, this is important. This shows you what we're really up against. To the south, we have industrial zone property, which is not something you typically want to build homes next to. So, this has been, this has kind of informed our site plan. It's away from existing single-family. That is why we are proposing a little bit, you know, medium-density type of use. You've got the Rochester Road Special Area Plan all along Rochester Road, which has some specific components of the master plan as far as density, as far as uses. It's a high-density corridor is what that's envisioned. And then we have neighborhood node, which we all know neighborhood node and what that allows and what it doesn't allow. But we do have neighborhood node directly adjacent to us. In fact, if you look at the master plan, I think it bleeds over into our site a little bit as far as what the node could be. We're not proposing to do anything like that. We're proposing exactly what we're showing. This shows the site plan. You've seen it a couple of times already. I've highlighted the public pathway. This goes right down the central spine of our project. If you remember the previous version, it was kind of off to the east and buried behind, you know, that wall. We wanted to make it front and center and make it usable and get people through the community. And you can see it's walking by the, what we're calling a community park, which really is that quasi-public, as I mentioned, and then that central village green amenity in the center with the fountain. So, again, this is really playing to a village concept. Everything's kind of combining and connecting through, but this would be open to the, open to the public and, you know, a huge component of the project. You can see to the west and northwest, if there is single-family there, that is exactly why we're proposing single-family, single-family to single-family, which I think everybody here could agree, that makes all the sense in the world. So, we're leaving density on the table, quote-unquote, if you will, but we think these single-family homes are very important in that area in particular. So, this just kind of reinforces what Brent had been talking about. The top left is what you'd seen earlier this year. You can see we had some townhomes kind of wrapping into that park area, pretty close to the single-family. We had 107 of them because they were all one-car townhomes, and there was not much open space there. The more I look at this, I understand why you made some of the comments you made. We really spread that out on the bottom right, which is the current plan, provide those pocket parks, provide that central open space amenity, remove some of the units. And again, a lot of these are now two-car, well, about half of them are about two-car townhomes, which really is kind of that, you know, as that family is in its formation stage, that is kind of your entry-level housing, if you will, which used to be, you know, your small, single-family. In this market, that is your entry-level, single-family. So, again, we reduced the density, 8.85 down to 7.13, well within the RT. Open space increased to, well, almost half of the site, provided for better road screening. We included the pocket parks. We did, I hadn't mentioned this yet, you had mentioned, didn't like that that road just kind of ended and then you had to turn left or right. We looked at it, we agreed, so we added in kind of a little curvilinear section of that, which I think just makes the site flow a lot better. So, that is a component that you had brought to our attention, and our planner came up with this, which we loved. I already talked about the Central Park. It's got fountains, benches, green space. We did provide a couple more amenity parking spaces at the trailhead, potential pavilion there as well. And then again, I already mentioned the reduction of 37 townhomes. So, that's the before and after. I only include this slide as a point of context. Again, the existing zoning is RT in about more than 75%, including the area that's adjacent to the single-family. So, potentially, we could do that. Now, you know, I'm not saying that we would submit a site plan and you would approve it, but that is what, under the existing code, that's no deviations. Those townhomes could be built that way. So, that would be split-grade, which is what we've done Long Lake Square, Bradley Square. So, that meets the RT zoning code, if you will, with your 25-foot setback. We're not proposing that. I don't think the neighbors would like that. You wouldn't like that. We wouldn't like that. That's just not what we would do. You can see on the right, that's what the condition would be more like, single-family to single-family. The qualifications, Brent had touched on this a little bit. I just want to go in a little detail on some of these. You know, we feel we meet your PUD ordinance in spades. Certainly, a mixture of land uses would not be otherwise permitted. We're providing a public improvement pathway. You know, we're working with the city to create one large regional detention pond, which will save quite a bit of money on future costs for DPW to maintain. So, we have a number of what we consider public amenities, the sledding hill, the central open spaces, and of course, the path. You know, I don't have to read through all of these, but I think you kind of get the point that we think we fit in very well in your PUD. And really, the deviations, and we can get to those in a minute, we're really not asking for much, if you will, from a deviation standpoint. It really is a function of the site plan and the uses that we're proposing, which really gets us that complementary variety of housing types, which is something that we've wanted from the start on this particular development. So, as far as the product design, again, you can see, this is just a wide range of types of homes that are offered for buyers. Anything from the detached ranch, which this is the same product that we're currently building on Square Lake, east of John R., at the Meadows of Troy. So, it'd be the same, you know, the same product in that respect, which I think, I mean, we know, we've already sold, you know, five of them, have a lot more interest. There is demand for that in the city, of course. Top right, that's just an example, some of the single-family, ranging from about 1,850 to 3,100 square feet. In the center is that attached, that's attached single-family. It's two-story. These are for families. These are three-bedroom with a den, potentially four-bedroom if they convert that. That's a family home. It's 1,850 square feet. The staff report had mentioned 1,650 square feet. There was some confusion, I think, because we had changed a little bit from the first submittal. Those are 1,850 square feet. It's a new product to us. We're starting to build them in a couple other communities. We're very excited about this. It's a true single-family for those that just can't afford, you know, $500,000, $600,000 on the top right. Not every family, obviously, can afford that, and we think you're losing quite a bit of families that want to call Troy home, and that really seeks to capture those buyers. Bottom left, that's the example of the townhomes. This is not what we've provided you in the past. It's not the same. We're not just sticking in exactly what we've done in the past. We've relooked at our materials. We've relooked at our elevations, and we think there's a lot more brick, vertical board and batten, which is definitely a richer look and really kind of higher-end design from what we have done in the past. And the bottom right is just another example of the single-family. Brent already showed this, but this shows where those products will be. Again, the bottom, you can kind of see how much brick really is proposed on those townhomes. Bird's-eye view, you know, again, I think this seeks to really understand the village concept, all the greenery, doesn't show the path all that well, but this, you know, really seeks to what we're trying to accomplish as far as that village concept. And I'll go quickly on this. The townhomes, again, 1,300 square feet. This is really the entry component of the project. Nobody lives on top of each other, and this really is that first opportunity for somebody who wants to stay in Troy or live in Troy, start out their path in homeownership. So, two-bedrooms, single-car townhomes. This is the two-car, 1,600-square-foot, two-bedroom and/or two-bedroom and a den. Those are 20-foot-wide, two-car attached, and you can see on this and the other one, one-car townhomes, we have what we call a zoom room. It's shown as a flex room there. Very popular with buyers having that first-floor living room, if you will, or office. It's been a real success. These are the attached single-family. This is why I say it's single-family. That is a single-family home. They, you know, they are attached to each other, and that's, again, a component of trying to keep the costs to where a homebuyer could purchase. So, we'll have, I think, packs of five and six. As you can see on the bottom, those are the elevations that we're proposing. And then you can see the loft in the second floor, and again, they're only two stories. The Raleigh Plan, which I've shown you a few times now, this is what we're building in Meadows. Again, first floor, master, very well-appointed. And then this is our single-family. We have not built this in Troy. In fact, we're building these right now. It's a new product for us. We're building them in Plymouth Township and having a lot of success with it. The market really likes the plan, and we feel it brings a lot of value to the homebuyer. Lot of rich elevation, contextual elevations, materials, colors, really run the gamut of how these kind of look and will correspond to each other on the street. Just more examples, there are a total of five single-family plans. I think that's it. That's my last slide. So, again, we're excited to move forward, and, you know, really, I'm hoping that we hit a lot of the things that you had hoped for us when we were here a whole eight months ago. So, I am happy to answer any questions, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from members of the commission? Mr. Ram.
If you can go back a couple of slides.
Sure.
Where we have shown the different products going in different region.
Yes. This one?
Yeah, just want to connect, you know. So, those pocket parks would be with this two-story?
Yeah, there's a couple of pocket parks. So, there's the pocket parks here.
Those are not very high elevation. Those are not with the townhomes?
Those are, right, those are the two-story, correct. Everything on the top right. And then within the townhome section, we've created quite a bit of open space. You know, these don't look like much on here, I can tell you. We build a lot of these, and we're able to create some really interesting seating areas and gathering spaces and nodes, just by kind of using the front-to-front orientation. You know, we've done tivoli lights, we've done seating areas, we've done fire pits, we've done, I mean, you name it, we've done community gardens. So, I think, you know, a lot of that's on the table as we kind of contextualize some of this, but that would be the plan. There'd be one here, one here, one here, and then, of course, the large central open space.
You're saying some seating arrangement?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was going to ask, because I don't see.
Most definitely, yeah. And these are more concept plans, especially when you get to this rendered plans, more like a cartoon.
That'll be great, because those spaces will be more useful in that case.
Agreed, yeah. We fully agree. It's something that's important to us, for sure.
Yes, Ms. Malahouli?
I need a clarification on the word that you used, quasi-legal, in terms of the sledding hill. What exactly is your intention?
Yeah, it was quasi-public.
Quasi-public, sorry, okay.
Yep. So, again, it would be, we'd be perfectly happy if it was owned by the HOA and only for HOA residents. What we're offering is potentially to open up, open it up to the public. Just because there's a public path there, it only makes sense. We don't want to be, hey, you can walk here, but you need to stay away. So, that's sort of our thinking through that. We got to work through some of the legal ramifications of that. But it's, we've done similar things in other projects, maybe not to this large degree of detail, but we have had several projects that would have a public amenity, public inclusion through the project. We would obviously do that through a master deed.
True. So, when we have anything given access to public, we also have to keep into the consideration as to its location, and of course, where it is situated, and the times that that will be used. In this case, it is so far inside the so-called Village of Troy, and also without any hour limits, time limits. I don't know how these things, I'm a little concerned about that. And also, I'm concerned about any kind of accidents that occur. And also, I'm concerned about any kind of accidents that occur on the property. So that was a concern that I know we all raised last time when we were here. So that's one thing that I do want to know about. And the second thing is, I feel your single-family attached, although I feel it's more like a condo concept, but I may be, but your play on words is fine, we'll take that, it's so locked in, and the access point is so difficult. Have you given a thought about the fact that there is not much in terms of the people who are living way back at the top of the slide there, the attached, single-family, attached family homes? They are coming all the way down the street and then making either a right or a left, which is either exiting onto Rochester or north onto Long Lake. It's a long, it's quite a lot of, hardly any access point, that's what I mean. I feel they are locked. At least the townhomes that you have in the bottom and the single-family homes, of course, have an exit point. I feel that that area does not have any entry. There's only one street that will get them in and one street that will get them out among all the rows of homes that are placed. Any thought was given to that?
Yeah, I'm going to show you maybe a different site plan that, let's use that just for example. No, I think that that's good feedback. Obviously, you know, we have constraints on the site. We can't have multiple access points to Long Lake Square. Obviously, the county road commission would have likely concerns with that. And really, you know, I think in our mind, it kind of creates a bit of an enclave for this area as well. It still will be connected to the public path, which I think is a very important component. Yes, they would have to drive out here and come out in emergencies. There would be an emergency vehicle access here. So, you know, that's important. They wouldn't be walled off in the case of an emergency. You know, I think for that buyer, if they're buying in the back here, they'd be comfortable with that and maybe prefer that to some degree as well. So it's interesting that, you know, the good news is, they don't have to buy a home from us. They buy because they want to, and this gives some options as far as, you know, the types of orientation and location in a project that they can buy. So we're not concerned from a practitioner standpoint. You know, we've been in business a long time, so when we drew this up, we weren't concerned with it. I understand your concern with it. From a builder standpoint, a practitioner, you know, we think having this particular develop, these particular areas needing to drive a couple of blocks out doesn't concern us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Since Ms. Mahaloahali brought up the question about the sledding hill being quasi-public, I don't know if Mr. Savin or Ms. Dufresne want to comment. Do we have any experience with anything like this in Troy before?
So I will handle the first part of that answer. I mean, we have not had much discussion, Mr. Loff, and myself and Ms. Bloom, about making that, you know, the sledding hill. My initial conversation with Ms. Bloom was, we were not interested in taking on the liability associated with the sledding hill. But the fact that they are creating that pathway, they have created those parking spots, you know, that goes, that's true, that's something that they're offering, that's a trade-off. So we're a long way from agreeing to making that a purely public space. I'm not sure that's what you want.
And that's not what we're proposing. We're proposing, because I heard that loud and clear last time, that there was no interest, and we heard it even before we came to the planning commission, that there was no interest in having that as a public park. So that's not a component. This is not publicly owned. If somebody gets hurt there, it's not on the city. It's owned by the HOA. So we have to get comfortable, you know, from a legal aspect, and we're comfortable at this point in doing that, but the city would not have any legal liability. There would be no ownership whatsoever of the city. Of course, unless you want it, but I know that you don't.
Yes. And Ms. Parakis?
Yes.
I just want to piggyback off of what Mrs. Mahaloahali said about the, that being a little bit difficult to get into. I was wondering whether you had given any consideration to moving, instead of having that main road come through your single-family homes, having the access point moved between the, it's a little bit hard to show, if you don't mind.
Right here.
Oh, yeah, that would be great. Moved it towards, to the left. So basically, the streets that are going through your single-family attached would run all the way across, and then, oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so this would run all the way across.
Oh, I see.
Okay? And then this road would come here and be the center. So you would enter this way, and then you could flip all these houses the other way to face the street, and you could fit maybe four or five of them across, and then there'd be the street, and then there'd be four or five this way, and then the backyards would be this way, and then here'd be the next street. So basically, and then I should also make the comment that I would like to see your single-family options be restricted to just, I think, the Raleigh option, which is that 1,800-square-foot ranch, which is what we were looking for in Troy, and not offer that because, basically, if you come in here and people are willing to buy a 3,000-square-foot home, you're going to build it for them, but the need is that 1,800-square-foot ranch. So if you oriented them this way, facing that road like this, you could still fit in many, they'd be single attached, so you'd enter, and you could go this way for your single family, this way for your attached family, this path would be along there, a little bit more centralized, and that would also help not have this be like a dead end.
So just to answer first, the Raleigh?
Yeah.
We've got 26 more of them to sell at Meadows of Troy, so if somebody wants one, they can certainly buy from there, and we would be happy to build another project like that. That product is best served in an enclave type of development, in our estimation, you know, being combined in this sort of family, village, if you will. We think that the single-family is certainly something that we would really strongly want to build. So, you know, obviously, we need to come a resolution with you as a planning commission, but we feel having the opportunity to build single-family in this particular neighborhood, when you have all these amenities, you have all this neighborhood type of family amenities, that's very important to us. So again, they can build the Raleigh, of course, they will if they want to, but again, we have 26 we'd sell to them right now. So there are other options, you know, for that, and again, I hope we could find more in Troy. Your orientation comment, I'm just thinking spatially. I don't know if that would, that would work. They're much, the lots are much deeper for the single-family. I think that's what you're saying, right? Basically, north-south orientation, just continuing that. I think we would lose quite a bit, and I don't think the roads would match up. So just kind of looking at that from a spatial, certainly, you know, we have a planner that could do that, I'm just doing it spitballing, but turning those, I think, would not work spatially that way. The other thing that I would say to that is, when we first came to you, I had, I heard comments about barracks and how that looked, and we kind of had that, if you will, all east-west orientation, and now we're saying, no, why don't you do all north-south orientation, which kind of lends itself to barracks again. So we were trying to play off kind of moving things around. We liked the way that looked. So I guess that's my comment. If it's connectivity, you know, there's other ways maybe to do it. Maybe that between 18 and 19 could be a one-way. You know, we haven't really explored that at all. It's just something I'm thinking of right now, if that's really, truly a concern. I think we could probably make the width to make that a one-way to have that connection, but it's not our intent to leave them as, you know, to their own devices there. We feel like they're very well-integrated. You got a path through it, and really, that's only a couple of blocks from the main east-west corridor. So I know that's not answering it to your satisfaction, but those are some of the thoughts we had when we laid this out. It was the barracks look and just having that lined up like soldiers, and then I just, I don't, I'm just spatially looking at it unless I'm missing something that I don't know if that would really work.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Hudson.
I'd like to direct your attention to the sledding hill portion of the project.
Yes.
That sledding hill is approximately 2/3 of the acreage of that area, and anybody who's lived in Michigan knows, maybe we get two or three snowstorms a year that could take advantage of a sledding hill. But you've got the spring, summer, and fall, and that hill's not going to be used for sledding. It seems like a terrible waste to put a sledding hill in there for such limited use. I'd like you to reconsider having a sledding hill and put some other amenities or level it, so we've got a larger park or some other amenity.
I appreciate the comments. You know, there's a sledding hill. We kind of took inspiration from a sledding hill in Beverly Hills, and it is a year-round. It gets used. When I lived in the area there, I would take my kids all the time and walk it in the summertime. So, and I know I'm not the only one, because it was always crowded. So I'm not disagreeing with you. I know there's not going to be that much opportunity. We probably shouldn't call it a sledding hill. As we mentioned to you before, part of the challenges on this is the dirt, so it's being able to utilize that as for our dirt, but also, we want to screen that, the salt dome, that's very important to us.
Yeah, I know. You've got a lot of problem moving trucks of dirt, but putting it in a sledding hill makes it a lot easier.
Correct. That's why it's been sitting here for, you know, 50 years.
Part of the problems of the project, don't build a hill.
Again, I'm sure you've driven past, back there and seen the salt dome. That's a concern for us, for sure. So, you know, again, there's a reason why it's been sitting here for, you know, how many decades. So it's a component of our plan that's important. I hear you as far as amenities. That's why we did include a promenade in there, I'm sorry, not a promenade, a pavilion. We can look at maybe other, you know, amenities, if you will, but what I'm hearing is maybe not open, we don't really want this for the public. So it's kind of a big area for just this one neighborhood to have a lot of park amenities. We can certainly look at, you know, programming something as far as landscaping, maybe putting some walking trails. Probably would have made sense to show some walking hills. That was our intent, to use it as walking hills, but you're right, it kind of dies right there. Probably should have on the back end to connect to the path. I think that that would make a lot of sense. If you're going down the path, you know what? Instead of going around the path, I'm going to go up the sledding hill and down. That's what Beverly Hills is. I don't know if you know which park I'm referring to. It gets a lot of use throughout the year, and I'm not just saying that to say that up here. I used it. You know, I know people in our company use that with their kids now. So I would push back a little bit on it just being used for a few days out of the year. I think it'll be used a lot in that respect. But I also understand, we probably could program it better, and I agree with that.
Yes, Mr. Craig.
Overall, you've made some good changes. You know, a couple of my thoughts, I just want to know, the screening between the, both on the north side and south side, what is that material? What is that screening between Long Lake Road and the development and then the?
Talking here?
DPW. Yes, that screening there, you enhance the screening. What is it?
So those would be evergreens. I think I have, I don't know if I have a detail, I should, I apologize, but.
Top form.
Yeah, thank you. So that is really the entry monument. That's this section here. So, you know, obviously, we want to have a nice sign, a nice monument wall sign with some fencing details and some columns and pilasters in between. As it moves further to the east, our envisioning on this would be having evergreen trees, you know, really as a screen to the road, and then having like a wood fence behind that to screen that from.
What kind of fence?
A wood fence, yeah. A wooden fence.
Really?
Yep.
Wood deteriorates, I mean, not unless you've done some incredible treatments that would, I mean, it's kind of flimsy compared to brick or other materials.
It's very expensive, obviously, and that is a long stretch, you know.
Looking for a quality development.
I understand that completely. We've done things where we've also done, again, kind of continuing this theme. Obviously, you can see through it. We'd have to do some kind of lower plantings to screen that as well.
But what about on the south side? It's a different situation. You're screening off and down.
Totally different situation, yeah. I think that, you know, the concept would be probably the, really the same with trees on the inside of that, so it was kind of the same kind of concept with this, with a wood fence on the south side. And I hear your comment about the maintenance.
Yeah, I would say wood is.
We've done composite, you know, vinyl composite, that sort of thing. I don't know if that's the look we're necessarily going for, so I don't want to say that we didn't put much thought into it, but, you know, from that perspective, we didn't have our designers, our consultants, really put a lot of focus on exactly what that fence will look like.
I'd like something better than wood paneling. The other item I was thinking of is the, again, to bounce off of Mr. Hudson's comments on that sledding hill.
Yeah.
Yes, you want to screen that salt dome. Maybe you can have some kind of a raised berm on the very south end, and then plantings to, you know, gain another section of height and screening with large conifer-type trees, but utilize all that land for just a sloping, you know, I would, I know you said they use it, but I could think of much more creative uses for that space for all of those neighbors. You've got, what, 146 homes there?
Yes.
They will, they could really use some kind of a gathering place, you know, if they had family gatherings, let's say a family reunion, or those kind of activities that I think would be, really utilize that space better than a pile of dirt. That's my thought.
And listen, this is all good feedback. I think, as I mentioned, there are certainly things we can do to this to improve it as far as usability, and, you know, the sledding hill probably wasn't correctly named. You know, we've called it a scenic overlook as well, but what I'm hearing is make it more usable, and we're 100% agreeing with you on that.
And not to be anything argumentative about changing the orientation with Ms. Parakis, but you might find, I kind of like the way you have it, only because people in single-family homes don't want these multifamily homes on their same street. It's just kind of a mix of two types of buildings that are that close together. If they want a single-family home, they want to be in a neighborhood of single-family homes. They don't want to be adjacent to, in other words, right now, they're really separated by their backyards. So I think that kind of layout is fine. The only other comment I have is that this layout, again, I realize it's a big overview, and when you get into the details and look closely, it may look nicer, but right now, it reminds me of a circuit board on a computer. It's well organized as an engineer, but not a village look. Village would have some kind of, you know, even the subdivision to the west, it's got a curving road, it's got, you see how those lots are kind of splayed out? It's more creative. I just, I see, you know, I could fit all those homes like a box, like a set of dominos into a box. It just doesn't have that village look, village like a town center and, you know, all the activity center. I realize you've got things, you know, you've got a weird piece of land, it's not conducive to creating a town center necessarily, but I'd like to see a little more creativity, especially on the, on the single-family home area, do something a little more, I know it's a square thing, and if you put a curved lot in, it's going to impact your design and utilization of square feet of dirt, probably not to your advantage financially, but I'd like to see a little more creativity on creating a village look. It's really, really, I don't want to say, you know, I don't want to give it derogatory, because they are nice homes and, you know, you've done nice things with the parks, but it's just too, too much like little boxes and all lined up as opposed to a village. Anyway, that's my thought. I'd like to see a little more creativity in the layout, especially with the single-family.
I respect your comments. You know, I think we'd certainly try to attempt that. If you look at the original version, I mean, I would agree with you if you're saying what you're saying, and you guys did say that. I'm sure you had made that comment before. We created, and it's not showing very well, probably because I highlighted this. That is why we did this. We really struggle with this project on not getting too suburban with curvilinear roads, and I think that that's a real fear, that that starts to happen. You have, you have a curvilinear, you know, obviously, this is curvilinear, you have this curvilinear here, you have curvilinear here, and, you know, certainly not to be argumentative, but I think from a village concept, a Main Street concept, we built one in Wick Som. I'm just using that as a point of reference. I'm just using that as a point of reference. And what's really striking about that project is it has these kind of gridded-out roads that remind you of the Main Street Village, if you will. And that's, that kind of created their downtown area, and we, you know, I think it turned out to be a great success. And that didn't happen because we put in curvilinear suburban roads. So, that, that was our thinking. Maybe we missed the, the mark on it, but to, to our point, we, we really thought adding, maybe this isn't enough, but adding this in really gave that interest and that continuity that we were hoping you were looking for as far as the, you know, the village curvilinear concept.
Well, okay, right at that intersection, as you're talking about, that curved section of road.
Yeah.
If you curved the other side of the street that way and did something on the south side so that you could put maybe a central fountain there, something that creates interest at that intersection.
So, right here, you mean?
Yeah, right there.
Because that is curved a little bit. Are you saying just more pronounced?
But, but to do something visually impactful, like when you, you know...
Okay.
Frank Lloyd Wright always had that thing where you read about his home design, like when you reach a certain point, you could see...
Opens up, yeah.
But you see something, the future that, ahead of you that you'd like to explore. There's nothing, I mean, to really to, if I came in off of Long Lake and I'm driving down, it would be nice to see something to explore at that intersection. I mean, just, I'm trying to get a village feel to it with more of those kind of village amenities.
I agree. And, and again, I, I wish I had a slide that didn't have this yellow bar on it.
No, I can, I can, I'm pretty good about seeing it.
I know you are.
I can see it.
I think, I think what we tried to do was, was create these terminus points, and that created, you know, by doing what we did here, created this terminus point with this focal point here. So, you know, what I'm, what I think I'm hearing you saying is, you know, really make this something special, something unique as far as this is, this is, this is something interesting.
It doesn't have to be in the middle of the road.
I get it.
But it could be in that green space, something to draw the eye as you're coming down that road.
No, I agree. That's a good comment.
Mr. Beetner.
I'm the new person on the committee, so I didn't see it. This is my first.
Nice to meet you.
Drainage is one of my first questions. Can you hit that for us, please?
Sure. So, everything will, obviously, will take all the drainage on site, and what's not shown here, and it's what I did discuss last time, is there's a regional detention pond that's in the works. The city is designing a regional detention pond, which is basically an expansion of the existing DPW storm pond, and that would service the DPW yard, an existing single-family neighborhood, which is a little bit to the west of there, and then three new potential proposed developments, ours being one of them. So, it would be, everything would be conveyed on site through storm pipes, and then it would, we have enough fall to get to the regional detention pond, which really sits right about here. Does that answer the question?
I think so. I'm just, I'm curious, so are you building this first, and then the retention pond comes in?
No, it would have to be done at the same time. We've had discussions with city engineering potentially working as the construction manager of it. You know, no offense to cities, but usually, we can do things a little cheaper with our trades. So, that would be the thought process through that. Also, you know, we could do that at the same time we're doing our, our land development. So, it seems to be some synergies, and it seems to be some willingness to do that. So, from a timing standpoint, their plans should be certainly ready to build by, by the time we get to that, which, you know, we're hoping would be in, in the springtime.
I'm sure you get, you know, drainage right now with all the fun that's happened the last couple of years is a, is a big buzz phrase for us.
No doubt.
So, that question. Parking was one of the things that came up earlier, and I'm curious your thoughts on the...
Yep. I appreciate you saying that.
I'm not a big fan of parking, but I'm curious why you have so much.
So, I think it's a, it's a misnomer, and I only say that because, and Brent kind of alluded to it, that number includes four spaces for every single one of these. Now, single-family, your typical single-family home has four spaces. So, I think we're, we're getting dinged by the fact that these are attached to single-family, and they're counting these driveways. If you didn't count those driveways, and we just talked about the attached single-family and townhomes, if you will, we're at 2.4 spaces per unit, which is about where we want to be. You don't want to be, I mean, most of these have two-car garages. That includes the two-car garage. So, from that standpoint, we're, we're maybe having, I mean, we're probably, I think about 0.75, maybe, maybe one, probably 0.75 parking spaces per unit, which is not overparked. And there's really nowhere else to park. They're not going to park on Rochester Road and walk in. I guess you can park, you know, in the, in the gas station, but, you know, that doesn't make for very happy citizens. So, you know, they'll be calling us, they'll be calling the city. Why wasn't there more parking in this? So, we've done this many times. You know, I don't need to say how long we've been doing these projects, but we, we know how, how much parking we're going to need before we start hearing it from our, our home buyers, and we feel like this is enough. Now, you could argue there's a lot of pavement on the south side. We added in some landscape islands. Could we add in a few more? Yeah, potentially, sure, but we do not feel we're overparked, and I think that those numbers really were kind of, you know, misconstrued because of, of factoring in the, the two spaces in each driveway. So, I'm hoping I answered that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, Mr. Savin wants to speak. I have a feeling he wants to talk about the regional detention pond.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just, I guess wanted to validate what Mr. Lockren's saying. We actually had a meeting last week. You'll recall, there was a one-family cluster development on Eckford. That was, the planning commission reviewed and council approved a number of months ago. That's to the south of here. I don't have a great map that shows it, but that is going to utilize this regional detention basin. There was another project, has not been submitted yet, but it was kind of talked about during the Eckford process, that, that's across, across Eckford, that is potentially going to utilize that. So, the feeling was, you know, months and months and months ago was, it's typically when these types of developments are approved, the detention basins are handed over to the city, and the city maintains them, the developer pays them, pays up front, and the city maintains them in perpetuity. And there was the potential for having three separate detention basins. Well, that's, that means three trips and unloading the equipment three times and et cetera. So, there was a significant benefit in, in expanding the existing detention basin and making it not only a utilitarian detention basin, but making it an amenity, because we've got the, this, this, this potential trailway meandering from Long Lake Road through this property, through the DPW property, connecting through the Eckford property, through the property across Eckford, and then connecting to the school district property, and creating a lengthy path, an amenity, pathway amenity in a city that significantly lacks pathway amenity. So, so the thought was that this detention, regional detention basin would be an amenity. It's not just going to be a perfectly, a perfect rectangle. It's, it's, it's going to actually be two ponds and provide visual interest and make it a, an experiential opportunity for people that are utilizing the trailway. I just wanted to, and, and I, I feel, I wish we had a final product, a drawing that, that we could put on the screen and say, this is what it, it's going to look like, but it's a work in progress. So, I don't have anything that we can share with you this evening to show it, but, but we will, at some point, when we have something concrete and finalized, I'll bring it to a planning commission meeting and, and show it to you so you can see it. Also, in terms of parking, just want to piggyback on that. So, I just want to make, be clear because the memo does point it out. So, we've got the, the single-family, you know, the, like, like Mr. Lockren pointed out, you've got garages and space in front of the garage. That, that appears to be appropriately parked. We've got the same thing here, garages and spaces. And here we got 70 units and, and a lot of spaces here. I just want to just double, kind of hammer this home. Is, is it, is it overparked? Is there opportunity here for lands, for maybe land banking some of these? And if you do need it in the future, you can construct it, or just want to make sure that we're, you know, is it right parked? Is, and, but also thinking in terms of, you know, this is quasi-public, there, there's also the potential in the future for, maybe this becomes a, an informal trailhead, where people park here, or they park here and they informally visit. So, I, I, I just think out loud whether, is it appropriately parked when you factor in guest parking and the potential for this to become a really cool amenity? Is this going to be right parked?
Thank you, Mr. Savin. Before I go through everyone else, I wanted to give Mr. Tagle a chance to ask a question or a statement.
I have a question and it's a comment. The, the emergency of equal access, how much wider would that have to be to, not to be a one-way, but to be a connector between the main north-south ingressor road?
I can look at the plans, but I believe it's 20 feet existing today. It's probably 18 to 20 feet, and it would need to be, I, I think that, I think these are 50-foot wide streets because they're private. So, another 30 or so.
I think, I think the, the comment about connecting those townhomes back to the main artery, I think is a valid point. I would really like you to consider that. I, I have a little bit different view than some of the comments I've heard. This is a difficult site because of the geometry of the site and what you've got around the site to deal with. I, I mean, I look at that main, coming south on that main entrance road off of Long Lake, and quite honestly, at the end of that road, at the T or the curve, there is definitely an amenity down there that, much like you spoke, Tom, it's, this is what you're looking at as you come down there. So, whether it's a clump of trees, or a water feature, or a piece of sculpture or something, I think that that's appropriately placed, and I think that, you know, that, that works fairly well. I think the other thing that's really difficult for us to see when we're looking at a, at a view like this, is really, what is it going to feel like when I'm standing in these spaces? Because I've heard it, it doesn't feel like a village. I don't know that curves make a village, but I do think some of your aerial perspectives, when it started to show some of the voids and the solids, meaning where the buildings were, where the void spaces were, I think it starts to give a better sense of, you know, there are pockets of green in there. There are places for people to have community, whether it's a pocket park, whether it's just a nice green space, but it is broken up. I don't, personally, I don't mind the, the layout, if you will, although it does seem rather formal. I don't necessarily think that's a bad thing, especially when you consider the geometry you have to work with, A for buildings and B for the property lines. And the, the last, well, two, two other comments. If you go back to your site for a moment. I'll tell you what, I don't have a problem with the sledding hill as some of the other commissioners do. I think every time I've driven by a sledding hill in any community, I mean, it is jammed with kids. They are enjoying it. I don't know, how many acres do you think, is it an acre, two acres in front of that sledding hill, call it a community park? I mean, I, I don't know. I'm guessing. It's a fairly large area.
It's, it's probably an acre and a half, yeah.
So, so you definitely have an opportunity there to develop some, some other, other than just a big green, you know, element on your background. I think a connection, as Brett was just pointing out, with the parking along the south property line there backing up to the DPW, I think if you had a connection, a pedestrian connection from that parking area into the green area, would also add to people, like, whether those 11 spots are really going to be enough or not, if there could be some overflow kind of to offset the fact that, man, you've got a lot of parking here for just the number of units you have. Well, this could also be used for people coming on site and coming into the...
So, where would that be, just for clarification?
Yep, just going to the right, a linkage right in there. Yeah, somewhere, somewhere right in there. And maybe it's, maybe it's between those two, the two townhomes, the, the two that are going north and south on the west side of that drive. So, I think, you know, again, I, I look at this plan, and I, and I'm looking at it, trying to visualize it through your perspectives, and just how you've broken the, the building areas up and created these enclaves of landscaping or parking, and I think, I think it is starting to create a villaging effect, maybe not as a single village area, but as, as more of a, a multiple village areas or multiple gathering areas in southern ends. And the last thing I have to say, I will not vote for vinyl siding. Development of this nature and of this caliber really has to do something better than vinyl siding.
So, I understand a couple of those. First of all, your comments on the sledding hill, I do appreciate. You know, I didn't, I didn't even mention the, the community park in Royal Oak, where we actually built a, a neighborhood on land that was owned by the city. We purchased the land, and then they, they built a 40-acre community park around it, and one of the main features of that was the sledding hill. So, you know, we kind of have a, a similar type of proposal, but this was, if you go there, it's packed all times of the year. I mean, I know, Darian takes his family there. It, it is something that I, I think a lot of other cities do want to say, no, now this is Troy, so maybe they don't feel the same way, and that's fine. But just to kind of reiterate that point, as far as the vinyl siding, we're proposing hardy on the single-family, hardy with, you know, stone, brick, you name it. We wanted some flexibility on the attached single-family and the townhomes. And really, the purpose of that is, first of all, there's a lot of brick that we're providing. So, really, the, the vinyl siding, if you will, it's Borden-Batten, first of all, and it's high up. So, you won't be able to tell the difference. Borden-Batten is not cheap. Borden-Batten vinyl is not cheap. Borden-Batten hardy would be astronomical. So, we're trying to get that look, but still have an attainable price point. And, you know, nobody wants cheap housing. We're not talking about cheap housing. We're really trying to say, we're trying to keep price points in line, and that's one way to do it. Our elevations, again, I, I just want to show these real quick. It is kind of hard to see on this, but you can see the, the brick line's pretty high up. I know it goes down a little bit here, but this is all vertical Borden-Batten vinyl. And that, I know that doesn't sound nice to the, to the ears to hear that, but I would argue this product really, really looks nothing like what you, you'd picture with a horizontal, typical horizontal siding at 0.4 mils. I mean, that's not, that's not what this is. So, you know, if you say you've got to have hardy on the townhomes, A, I think we're going to struggle quite a bit to get a price point that, that makes any sense, and we will struggle with sales, which, I mean, that, that's our problem. But we, there's just no way we could do the vertical Borden-Batten hardy. The cost, even with this little amount, would not be possible. So, you know, we probably have to go to horizontal, and I just think that loses the look. So, I'm not arguing, I, you know, obviously, I know, I know you're an expert on that, but from our standpoint, just because of this, the location next to an industrial site, to say, hey, why don't you spend an extra, you know, 20,000, 25,000 on hardy? Well, you've got an industrious right next to it. So, I, I would push back on that quite a bit, particularly in regard to the townhomes.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with the vinyl siding, the Borden-Batten, but you haven't convinced me yet on the dollar amount. I don't think, I, I mean, again, I get it, it's high up, and I'm facing industrial, but that doesn't mean you put back on the quality of the development or the quality of the materials of the development.
It, I, I understand. I mean, it, it's also a maintenance. You know, zero maintenance is, is really what we're trying to, to accomplish, and you won't, don't really get that with, with the hardy board. So, you know, it, it's a number of things, just from, from a, from a cost, initial cost, it's an ongoing cost. And, you know, I, I understand where you're, you're coming from, but to have hardy next, I, I would be hard-pressed to find a, a hardy development right next to an industrial project like this. So, those were our thought process.
I don't understand the comment. You're putting all, you're just telling me about how quality of materials for the, all of the brick you're putting in and all the design features you're putting in...
Yes.
Right next to the industrial. But now you're saying, because we're right next to the industrial, we can put vinyl siding in it.
Well, it's, it's reducing the cost overall, is my point. Well, we can take some, some brick off. Just kidding.
Just before I turn around for some other commissioners, I kind of like the idea that Ms. Perakis had about flipping the houses so there was more of a connection between the, the condos and the single-family, but I know you may not be able to do that, but I, I guess it's kind of a compromise. I, I guess it's kind of a compromise, I liked what Mr. Tagle suggested, which was to take that EVA and widen it out so it's actually a street, so there's better connection between the single family and the condos. Another suggestion would be, I, I don't see it on the drawing, but some kind of more pedestrian access between the condos and the single family, maybe another pedestrian connection that would go out, that would, there would be more walkability between the two areas, that way you get more of a sense of, it's all one community, even though they have their own separate pockets, so I don't know if that's something you looked at or not.
Current, are you talking about in, between these two areas?
Yeah.
So that, that, I, I've been just calling it a, an EVA, but it, the intent was also have it as a, as a pedestrian access, or really focus more as a pedestrian access, that doubles as an EVA, so.
How about another one, maybe a little farther south there?
You know, it's not that long of a street, I mean, certainly, we can look, we can look at anything, you know, now we're, now we're reducing what I think are, is an important component, where we only have 20 single family, so, you know, it's all part of the equation, but, you know, certainly, we'd like to keep the 20 single family, if that's not the, the intent of the, the planning commission, we can, we can take a look at, at, you know, what we can do to increase some connectivity.
That's what you think about, so.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Ramon.
Ms. Perakis, you wanted to.
You want to go first?
I wanted to go first, yeah.
Okay, I mean, I, I guess, you know, I'm hearing my fellow planning commissioners talking about the village concept and the community, but is this going to be a single homeowners association with all three different types, or is it going to be three different homeowners?
It would be a master with three separate, they would have separate dues just because of, like, the single family wouldn't have, they wouldn't have the need for ongoing maintenance expenses, operating costs in regard to the, the units themselves, but they would have snow removal, so there'd be a master to take care of the snow removal, probably the grounds, landscaping overall, and then each subset, subcommittee would have different due structure, so they'd, they'd function as an overall, but there would be kind of three separate underneath.
I imagine they would pay different amounts.
Correct, that's right.
And, and you're proposing that you're going to maintain the pathway too, by.
That's correct.
Keeping snow off of it and all that.
Yes.
Okay, so, I guess back to the point of the village and, and feeling like one development, feeling like neighbors, and then making the comment that, you know, if you're in a single family, you don't want to be connected to the attached family, I, I guess I didn't see it that way, I, I would be in favor of looking at, you, you know, my idea is to put the, the road in the center, and maybe if, playing around with the types of housing, you could maybe consider duplexes, fourplexes, something like that, running that way as well. I don't have the problem with the sledding hill, I like the sledding hill, there's room at the bottom of the sledding hill to, you know, put picnic tables, outdoor seating, whatever you want, and have the sledding hill, which can be used all year round, I mean, I've even seen people use cardboard boxes, I think they do it in Birmingham, or it's something.
My kids did that, for sure.
Yeah, so, so I love it, I love that idea, and frankly, I don't have any problem with the vinyl siding, vinyl's come a long way, I get it, you've talked a couple times about how there's 25 houses for sale at that square footage that we were talking about.
Yes.
Is that the Square Lake?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so, what's the price point on those?
We start in the fives, and they option them up, and it's expensive for, for the square footage, but that's, that's what it costs to build those, they're fairly high up.
So I guess my point is, is those haven't sold, I don't know that the need, I don't know that the issue is that people don't want that type of housing?
Oh, we just opened up for sales, I was being, you know.
Okay, well, when, when it first came, I thought it was going to be pre, pre-sold before.
Oh, yeah, no, no, we're happy with this, I mean, considering, not to interrupt you, considering where we're at in the market right now, I mean, that's something that's kind of, we haven't spoken about, the housing market, if, if you haven't heard, is not very good right now, so to have five sales in, what, six weeks that we've opened up, we are thrilled with that project, and there's a lot of, I think, demand, so, just to maybe clarify, I didn't, I didn't make that point, I think, earlier.
Well, I mean, it is a little bit concerning, I, I from the, initially thought that they were priced much too high for what they are, so this would be an opportunity to provide that sort of house at a more reasonable price point by.
It would be the same, I mean, the same, I don't think we'd price it any lower than Meadows, is that what you're saying?
If you built 1,800 square foot homes, they'd be go for 500,000 at this area?
At the, the one, the one level, yes, the ranches would be, yeah, there's, I mean, from a land development perspective, it is higher land development there because there's common open space, and there's, there's less units, so some, to some degree, these would be a little cheaper, but no, they would, they would definitely be very close to those, those price points.
So you provided a bunch of market analysis for us in the.
Yeah, that was, I think, from January, I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, many, many pages, so can you tell us a little bit, talk to us a little bit about what the purpose of showing us those were for?
I believe it was a requirement when we first submitted for concept to show market data, and again, this was, I probably pulled that, I don't know what the date on, it's probably December, which.
It's March.
It's March from this year, okay.
March 24th, 2022.
And certainly, things have changed even, even from March, so I don't have that on the top of my head, because I didn't, I didn't bring it with me to study it, but I can tell you, things have probably changed quite a bit from, from that date.
But I mean, the sales were around 350 for the townhomes, and the 1600 to 1800 square foot homes, that's why I was, I'm a little bit shocked to hear now that the price points are going to be that much more, I thought you were trying, I thought the point of this was to tell us that the price points are going to be less.
Certainly, yeah, the price points on the townhomes would start in the, I would say, the high 2s, low 300s, and then that kind of brings you to the rung of, say, the mid 300s for the larger townhomes, and again, who knows in a, in a year when this comes online, but we think that the, the two stories, we would probably be in the 400s, you know, starting point, but then single family, I don't know anybody that can build a single family home for less than 500,000 right now, I just, I, I haven't seen it, it, you know, this same product in Plymouth is, you know, in the 6s and 7s and 8s when they option them up, so, you do have quite a bit of rung with the products we're, we're proposing, which is, which is an important component of it, so things have changed since that March, but those kind of striations, I think, are, are what we're still expecting for this project. I'm not sure if I answered the question directly, so.
Um, no, it's, it's fine, I, I mean, you, you understand that.
Yeah.
I'd like to see it a little bit more, I just see it as three very distinct, and different, and separate, and not cohesive units, doesn't feel like a village to me at all. There are definitely nice things about it that I like, but those are some of my concerns.
Yeah, I understand completely.
Mr. Ramon.
Yeah. Okay, I have a couple of questions, first, maybe when you are ready, so if we can look at the layout one more time, and we, we spoke about between 17 and 18, that, oh, 18 and 19.
Yep.
And what is the plan, is it going to be a paved emergency vehicle?
It'd be emergency vehicle, so it'd be, again, and I, I should have it on the top of my head, I believe it's a 20-foot wide.
No, let's forget.
But yes, it's for an emergency vehicle, so.
It'll be paved?
It'll be paved, yes, exactly, it'll be paved, and it'll be, again, it'll be open up for pedestrian.
No path, like walkway?
The, the point would be that it would be open up for pedestrian access, we did something similar in Northville Township where it was a, they wanted an emergency vehicle access, it was much longer than that, and really, for all intents and purposes, is a pedestrian path, and we designed it that way.
The gate, that emergency vehicle?
It'll, we'll, we'll work with, sure, we'll work with fire, it'll, it'll either be removable bollards, or, you know, some, whatever works for the, for the fire, I don't know if you have comments?
It'll be, it'll be bollards, they're wooden bollards, they've got holes drilled in the bottom of them, and if, if an emergency vehicle has to, they can, they're removable or they're breakable.
Right, okay.
But they look, it functions, it'll probably, hopefully, never be used for emergency purposes, so day to day, it'll be, it'll look and function as a pathway for pedestrians.
Right, but it's quite wide, and it can be one-way.
Wide enough for a fire truck.
And the applicant is already saying that this can be used for one way, right, to increase the connectivity, so my question is, can you have the same thing between 14 and 15?
Well, again, it's just, it's just removing area that could be for single family. Yeah, I mean, we, we would have to, to lose a lot to do these things we're talking about, which, you know, at the end of the day, does that make us go away? I, I don't know, but that's what it would take, we've, we're basically at kind of our width, and if you notice, the, the, one of the challenges, this, this Lot 11, because of the curve, it really kind of makes this lot so much farther north, now, if we took out that curve, we'd have all the room to do what you're talking, but we're, we're trying to, we're trying to accomplish both, so.
Maybe that's a trade-off, we can ask the commissioners that which one you would like, I would like to have another one-way, you know, one-way in and one-way out, and make it as like a standard road, so that we have more connectivity, I mean, this is something that, then we don't need to have the round, because that was not a proposed item in the previous, you know, submission, right, I mean, that's something that we can do. That way, it's, it'll be more, because I, I feel like this is a little claustrophobic inside, if you have like so much inside you leave, right, now, so many people will be living in, in that place, so it's something that maybe we can think about. If we make it a sharp corner at the corner, I don't know if we have to do that, but if you think that's something that we have to do, so we can have some trade-off analysis, like which one we want, the round corner or an exit, so that it's more connectivity, because I, we are not reducing any, you know, single family homes, we're not reducing anything, it's just a little, you know, pathway, or, I mean, as, one-way road that you have to build, right, I mean, move the, one of the houses, and that probably will distort the house alignment, and it seems like it's all like aligned, parallel, like a circuit board, I like Mr. Kent's example, it really looked like a circuit board, and last time when we spoke in the January 11 meeting, that's how we ended, right, that we want to, Mr. Tagle was saying that, you know, maybe we need to have more unique connectivity among all these three different types of homes, so I don't think that has happened, just a round corner is not going to add that, so, that's one thing that I think we should, we should consider, you know, what else can be done. At the sledding hill, I, I like it, I mean, definitely, that's a good thing, it's a unique thing, I was wondering, you know, maybe you suggested that, and one more connecting, connection with the, the parking spot, right, on, on the corner, but that way, with that, those extra parking spots will be, I mean, the outside people, if we allow outside people to come in and enjoy the, the park, then they can use those, and they don't have to park, I mean, we may have, run out of parking spot on that round, you know, parking space, so a little bit of connectivity, I don't know if I'm saying it right, and this just closest to me corner.
Right here?
Yeah, right here, if you can, or, or at the end also, you can just have some pathway, so it's kind of directs people to, to the, you know, that, that nice place that you are proposing. Yeah, and then a little bit of amenities there on the green space, the middle that you were saying, will be useful, you know, so, yeah, but my, my major concern is, you know, we need to have more connectivity, and then, can we change the alignment of the houses, somehow make it not look like a barrack, right, the army barrack, so can we just change the color or do something, so that we, it's like we're driving and you're seeing monotonous same house, you know, all the single family houses?
Oh, yeah, we, we have, I think, 12 different color packs with different materials, so I, I would, I would venture to say you're not going to see a barracks as far as colors as you're coming down the single family, we, we've got quite a bit, so.
And finally, which is to Mr. Grant's point, I live on Long Lake Road, and I know that the wooden siding that, or the fence that you are talking about, I, I think your property would be a lot more valuable if you make it more brick, or something which is aesthetically more pleasing, you know, this, this, this complex will be a lot more valuable, because people will be that, Long Lake Road is a big road, that they, they will see the complex, you know, and it'll be nice to have all brick, or something which is nicer than just wood.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll definitely address, yeah, we'll definitely address that, your other comments about, I mean, a lot of you had those comments about adding more amenities, particularly in the community park, the northern part of it, we're 100% willing to do that. I don't know about the curve, I mean, that's something that, that we're, we would look to you for direction, we had it originally, just coming straight down, either way, the important thing that I think we want to say is, this is, we really did plan this, and it's just not coming through here, but we really did plan this for have to have terminuses on the open spaces, not only here, but also here, so those were, those were really kind of design elements that I can see are not coming, coming straightforward here, but we can beef those up to, to really kind of make them more of a village concept as far as, as you mentioned, Commissioner Grant, being able to, you know, kind of see beyond it and, and say, hey, this is somewhere I want to go, so, you know, the connectivity, all of these things we're talking about, connectivity through, you know, we, certainly, I should have put yellow here, because it is a pedestrian path, I, I understand you want a, a vehicular, we'll, we'll end up losing a lot, I'm thinking, because of that, but I want to take another look at it and, you know, see, see what we can do as far as providing that, because that's.
Between 14 and 15, another, you know.
I, I would say, not to, not to argue that point, I, I don't know if I want two one-ways, we'd probably just want one single, I think that just probably makes more sense, but we'll, we'll look at it, for sure.
And there's one more thing, I know, I think last time we spoke about it, you know, that some of the interesting things that you want to do, if you don't show the details, then we really don't know what you're trying to do, so I would like to spend a little bit more time, to your point, I saw a lot of architectural isometric, or what is that?
Birdseye.
Perspective views, and showing people sitting down in a bench, that, that way, like a maybe additional five or six view, I know you have it isometric type, or a three-dimensional view for the overall compound, but special areas, if you have five or six views, that'll be more interesting for us to say, hey, now it looks like a village, so that'll be appreciated next time, you know, if we can, you know, bring that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, there's a public hearing this evening.
So, with that little suggestion from Mr. Savant, if anyone else has more questions, then we can get the public hearing open ears, Ms. Malahaly.
Thank you, one last question to ask you, and that is, what is your screening idea towards the south side of the property for the townhomes, because it is three stories, so if somebody were to stand on, in the third floor, will they still be looking at building or DPW site, what are we looking at?
Yeah, this, this actually is not the DW site, DPW site, that's down here, this is the old Goodman Building, which is still in industrial use, but to answer your question, you know, at, at first, nothing, we probably wouldn't be able to get up to the three stories, eventually, these trees, it would be evergreen trees we would plant, would, you know, serve us sort of that buffer to the south. The only thing I'd mention of that, because I had, I sort of anticipated that question, these units, first of all, they're, they're the one-car, the smaller units, which, you know, that's, I only reference that because that's, you know, from a location perspective, that's where we put them, but really, they live to the front, for most, for all intents and purposes, they have their second floor balcony to the front, their master bedrooms to the front, so it really lives that way, that's not to say there aren't windows on the back, of course there are, but it's, it's really functioned, those are the garages on the back, so it's more functioned to live in the front, that's where you're, again, your balcony is, that's why we created these, these mews, if you will, through, because this is, this is the livable area, this isn't necessarily the, the focus of the house.
Okay, that makes it clear then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any more questions? All right, thank you very much, and with that, we will open the public hearing, and anyone that would wish to speak to the commission on the proposed plan unit development is welcome to come up and address the commission now. Yeah, come on up.
Chairman, am I, am I going to be using the timer this evening?
No, I don't think there's enough people to really worry about it, I mean, if we had hundreds of people here, probably, but.
Just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page.
Yes.
My name's Lenny Joseph, I live in Riverbend, which is just to the west of that. You talked about the green belt that separates us and this development, possibly removing the trees that are there, because they have a problem, what is, what is the, I mean, I may have to do landscape design and stuff, what is the, is there a plan that, what you're going to put there, for some kind of screening?
This is an opportunity for you to give us your opinion and raise questions, then when, when we're done with the public hearing, then we answer your questions.
If, if the trees are removed, we'd like another tree line put there, roughly, you know, pines, that go from the ground up to create the privacy that separates us and their backyards. I understand you can't control the sound, I get that, but from the privacy where they can't see us, we can't see them, give them, because that's their backyards, they don't want to see us in our, you know, going in and out of our houses, so that's one question. Second question is, the retention pond that's in our property, will this development be putting anything attached to that?
I can answer that question, no.
Okay, thank you. Are the streets in this development private? Is the HOA responsible for the snow plowing and stuff?
We'll find that out after you, after we finish the public hearing.
Okay. That's it, thanks.
Be sure to sign in there on the, on the form, make sure you, is there no pen there? So, I don't know if Jackie has another pen, oh, Mr. Ramon is.
See some pen here.
Great, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the commission, come on up, no need to raise your hand, just come up in whatever order you want to, so.
My name is Sushil, I also live in the same Riverbend. When you're traveling or coming from east to west, coming and you're making turn, there's no turn there, so our street is a private street, when they're going to come, they're probably going to enter in our street, and then they go and make a right turn, because there is no way you can make a right turn there, left turn there, sorry, so either you're going to go there and make, there's no U-turn there, so either you had to come to our street, and then go east to, or to their parking, I guess, to their homes, you know, those one, two, three, four, those 20 homes. So my concern is, you know, it's a private street, we own it, we maintain it, who's going to take care of that if, if the traffic, you know, adding 146 homes in there, multiply by at least two cars in each home, you're talking about 300, I'm not saying that all the, going to come this side, but there's a concern that, you know, traffic is going to go, noise is going to go up, then Lenny, as he said, that the tree line is there, but right now, we cannot see anything, there's no lights or nothing, so all those are concerned which we have in our neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you. Next person. Good evening.
My name's Gary Osak, and I live just to the east of that on Davis Court, and I'm very interested in the property and development in that area. It's extremely dense, and I, sorry, I'm not as well-prepared as I want to be, I was just making some notes here, it's kind of a stream of consciousness, but if I express myself now, it'll save myself from going home and writing a long letter to everybody, which I would do otherwise. So I would say that the quality material is very important. I walked down Glacier Street, and there's a developer there that has developed many homes there that are just beautiful, and we talk about density. This would be, it's one unit per acre, and those are very attractive homes. I don't know who that developer is, but he should be given an award by the city of Troy. This is seven times the density. Bradley Square, my wife and I, we drive by that, we say, there's the projects, this kind of looks to me like the projects, you know, just looking at it here. You look at Briggs Park, I don't know who owns that property, but they put in a beautiful high-brick fence, we talk about putting up a wood fence, that's kind of Mickey Mouse to me. This is a multimillion-dollar corporation. Briggs Park should be given an award for that. They have complicated brick and a beautiful architectural structure, fencing, well thought out. It's accretive to the city, it's not diminishing from the value of the city. I think that's what the city should be in the position, we're in a, the city is in the catbird position. Why do we want to jam into stuff? Why don't we ask for quality? Why don't we ask for something that adds value to the city? I don't understand the propensity or the desire to jam in properties to get more tax base. It's nice, good to have tax base, but if you have a quality community like Bloomfield Hills, people want to go there and they're willing to pay high taxes. I think if I were king, that's what I would want to do. I would say with regard to quality, whoever built the condominiums at Lamb and Rochester Road that go east and west, you look at, those are all brick, hello, high quality, not vinyl With regard to the traffic study, to me, that's unbelievable. I would like to buy anybody a cup of coffee at McDonald's and see you pull out of that at rush hour. That's head-on collision, I can't believe there's not more head-on collisions at that place to add more traffic there without, I know there's not an interest in more traffic lights, but it's, I can't believe there's not more head-on collisions. People are going left into Neheys, into the banks, into those other residential areas. People are speeding from the north, going to work, coming, people come from Rochester Hills to get to I-75, and they'll go 65 miles an hour. People will pass you in the center lane. People use the center lane as a cruise lane now. And to say that it passes traffic, I don't know what, maybe people that are producing these studies live in New York City or something like that, because the traffic here is unbearable, and I think it's taxing the local infrastructure. I think that drainage has to be built before anything else is done. I know somebody that lives on Eckford, who's, I happen to tune into the TV on cable TV and watch Planning Commission and talk about the drainage on that road, and people, some people live there, they like its nature, they're aquatic people. But the person that I know that lives on that road said that they've had two 500-year rains in the last 10 years or something like that, the road, the place gets flooded out. That's incomprehensible to me in a modern civilized society like Troy, the city of tomorrow, you know? That has to be addressed first before putting more burden on the infrastructure. I think it's like backwards to think that we're going to have homes that are flooded out in this community. I just don't, I don't believe that. I don't think that's responsible planning. I know you're all intelligent people, and I don't understand, really, I've lived here 36 years, I was in a homeowners, president of the homeowners association at Mount Vernon Estates for two years, so I got slightly involved in how things work, but I really don't know that much. So I don't understand the pressure that the city is under to do this. I'm sure, I know there's legal pressure to develop, and we can only stand in the way so much, otherwise you're going to get sued, and we'll lose in court and all that stuff. But to the extent that it is possible to drive quality and sensible development, I think, I would, you know, I guess I would say beg you, but I don't think that's the right word, but that's the best word I can come up with, I'm standing here, to demand that we get quality. Corporations are driven by earnings per share and bottom line, that's what all these people up here are driven by, that's what they're paid for, and that's what they're going to do, and that's when they're going to go to sleep, thinking about this project, and to get up tomorrow and think about it. That's what they're paid to do. So they're very driven to do that. The concept of a village, that's a nice thing, it'd be like calling it Paris of Troy, or the Eiffel Tower, or the Pacific Ocean of Troy. It's a nice name, but there's no village concept to it. It's a bunch of, it's a high-density development, I think we, I don't know how we could argue And I think this is the final note I have here, to say that it's single-family development and not rental, I live just to the east of it here, and we have a homeowners association, but there's nothing in there that prohibits those homes from being rented out. And you know what happens in our rental property, there's not pride of ownership, and there's not, it's a totally different thing. I don't know if that can legally be changed. So people, large corporations with deep pockets, buy properties for rental, and that's what they do. So I don't know what would stop this low-cost, basically apartment-like complex from being bought and rented out. So I don't think, to say that it's a village and everybody loves each other, that's very nice to say, but I don't know really how that's accomplished. So thank you, and I wish I was more organized, but that's the best I could do at this spur of the moment. I appreciate your time.
Did fine.
Thank you.
Next person that would like to speak is welcome to come up. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Deepan Shivaasa, I live in the Ziwazank Court. I think some of the concern I have is that going westbound on the Long Lake, there's no left turn, the traffic will definitely have to route to our subdivision or the Somerton. Second thing, which I think, traffic going on east, toward the east on Long Lake, I mean, during the peak hours, like half a mile to three-quarter mile backup. And given the routing right now we have, people will use this site plan, with those new route, to bypass the Rochester Road junction, because just take a right, go straight, take a left, out. So I like the idea this council of practice has provided, that maybe just route the, instead of making this long路, just go some chickjack kind of pattern so that people don't use it. Pocket parks, are there going to be any amenities over there, or they're just grassland, basically? Because given that younger families living there with young kids, I mean, it's dangerous. I don't want my kids to be playing there with so many cars going in and out. I mean, 300 cars, or like 150 cars living on this attached area, I mean, this is the one way for them to go in and out. So I don't know if some, the traffic study, I thought it was done only on the Rochester Road. Why it was not done on the Long Lake Road, I don't know, I mean, it's not required, or it was simply, I mean, this is the first time I'm in this kind of meeting, so I don't know what's actually trying to ask, I like, I don't know, so that's one point. One other thing which I saw, like between the Riverbank Court, the subdivision on the west, and the proposed single-family unit backyard, there's a wetland right now. So I'll be proposing to remove that wetland, and how that wetland, removal of the wetland will impact the water table and everything over there, that study has been done. And where they will be applying for removal of that wetland, will the, we will have any say on that thing, or that's something happens in the background? I don't know, I mean, that's something I would like to, I'll try to find out too, but I don't know if council can tell me that. Those are main thing I have, so thank you for listening to me.
Next person who'd like to speak is welcome to come up at this point. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sandal, I live in Riverbank. Actually, Troy, this area has a very good view, and, you know, building this would actually restrict our views, what we see in the morning, and also, I see like the one where the towns are located, it's more claustrophobic, like Ramon said. And actually, if it could be flipped, that would be nice. And second thing is, because of this restricting view, our property values can go down, so I don't know like how we are going to be compensated for that. So those are my questions.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Anyone else that'd like to speak to the commission? Anyone else? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at this point, and then I'll mention, I received one email, it may have been one of the people speaking this evening who lives in the same subdivision that most of the neighbors here came from, and they were concerned about their, the tree line, and concerned about how it would affect their property values, and I think that was the only email we received, didn't we, Mr. Savadant? Okay. Well, with that, oh, let's answer some of the questions, and this is, some of this is feedback for the petitioner. One is request for pine trees to be put in, it's kind of a barrier or a screening, is that something that you're open to doing?
Certainly, we're open to working with our neighbors, we've done it numerous, numerous times. So I think there's still quite a bit of tree line, it's kind of hard to see on this, but they have some trees on their side that obviously we wouldn't be touching, so, but we're willing to work with them on maybe augmenting that where we need to. That's something we're used to doing, and we're fine doing that.
And I guess I'll keep you up and ask some other questions. Are the roads that you're proposing, are those going to be private roads, or are those going to be city roads?
They will be private.
Private?
And then the HOA would maintain them for snow removal and for maintenance.
And there was concern about, I think, the wetland area, that has to be dealt with between you and Eagle, I believe, doesn't it?
Yes, we've had initial conversations with them, it's low quality, as Brandon mentioned. It's only regulated because it's part of a larger complex, we are less than one acre, which typically wouldn't be regulated, but, you know, it's fragmites and cottonwood, and it's just, it's not necessarily, and it's not a naturally forming wetland to begin with. So, but yes, there is a step that we have to go to Eagle, for sure.
And there's no intention, I think we've already discussed it about the detention, no intention of using the neighbor's detention?
Correct, that's correct.
Going to this regional detention pond? And this, the pocket parks, what kind of, are you thinking about any particular amenities in there, are they going to be just kind of like?
Yeah, I had alluded, yeah, I had alluded that a little bit earlier. Some of them, like the main village green amenity here, we do want to keep, you know, more open, if you will, but those pocket parks, there's plenty of room to do, like I mentioned, tivoli lights, seating areas, potentially having some fire pits, that sort of thing, you know, gas fire pits. We've had wireless, offering wireless for our residents, so we're, we've done a lot of pocket parks, and, you know, some we do very well, some we've learned from. So we would definitely program each one of these, and we can provide some more detail as we move forward.
And I think the other questions are probably going to go to Mr. Savadant. The traffic study, did it, it just didn't include Rochester Road, it also included Long Lake, didn't it?
That is correct, and I remind you that our traffic expert is here. We were joking before the meeting that he was my security blanket, if I invited him, no one was going to ask him any questions, so you're certainly welcome to prove me wrong.
Hopefully you didn't hit him in the head before the meeting, to make sure he showed up, so. Let's see, the other thing was, there's a question, I think, about the access, and maybe he can answer the questions, we can bring him up here, access off of Long Lake, there was, I think you're, maybe the engineering department raised some questions about having to talk to the road commission for the?
That was Mr. Dearing who raised those questions.
All right.
Yeah. If you can look at that plan, let's see, does this have a laser pin?
Which way do you want to go?
Okay. Red button? Does it want to do anything much?
Want to go up?
I'm changing their slides, my apologies.
So point it over here, there's a?
Well, yeah, that's the one. Okay. So you can see that Long Lake has a boulevard, but it's ending opposite this property. The portion of the boulevard that shows up as a darker shade is the part that can be vegetated, but then there appears to be like a nose that sticks out to the west. What that is, is a bit of raised pavement that has corrugations or rumble strips carved into it. We noted that that would be a problem. When it was just the driveway for a single-family home, they just drove up onto the rumble strip, and they got in and out of their property. But what we've identified is that they need to reconfigure the median, both the landscaped and the rumble strip portions, to be able to carve in a westbound left-turn lane, so that vehicles that want to enter the development can do so without hanging out into the westbound through traffic. And then we defer to the road commission to identify the particular geometry needed, the tapers to open up the turn lane, and how they would want to treat that rumble strip area. Should it, can they grind it down, do they have to remove it and replace it with, you know, concrete slabs? You know, the mechanics of building the lane, of course, the road commission's going to have the final say to that. But yes, it's been identified, they've been put on notice, and we're waiting for the road commission to identify the things that they'll do to issue them a permit, which would include that type of improvement.
I see that the turnaround point there, that's controlled by a traffic signal, isn't it?
I believe yes.
And I'm wondering, just from a safety point of view, and I know the developer does not want to have an entrance there, but just from a safety point of view, wouldn't it be better to try to do the entrance at that point, rather than another turnaround farther to the west?
Actually, no. The reason is, at a signalized intersection, the rule of thumb, not the rule of thumb, the actual law is that right turns take precedent over left turns. That crossover is to handle the turns you're not allowed to do at Rochester. So it's primarily for the indirect left turns. And the road commission wants that movement to be the priority. Once you put a driveway opposite, if it has any kind of volume, those vehicles will now, under the vehicle code, have priority, and the crossover traffic has to wait. And that's kind of, I don't know, I don't believe it's intuitive to most people, but the road commission wants to preserve the ability for that crossover to handle as much traffic as possible, without the interference of a derived opposite.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions? Yes, Ms. Malala Hawley?
Can you explain why the traffic study only was focused on the Rochester Road and not on the Long Lake Road? And also, Long Lake is a very busy street, as rightfully identified by some of the neighbors who live there, and one who uses that road. It's a very, very busy street. Will this entrance in any way impact? How will the residents have enough room to come in and go in and out, considering the fact that is the main artery?
Well, yes, both Rochester and Long Lake Road are major primary roads, they're very busy, both of them, to different degrees, but without a question, they're both very busy. they're both very busy. The traffic study indeed looked at the access, their proposed access out to Long Lake as well as the connection through Glacier to Rochester Road, as well as the intersection, the main intersection of Rochester and Long Lake. Um, 20 acres or not, it's still a relatively small development in terms of the traffic generation. Uh, it is going to increase, uh, traffic in this immediate area, including at the main intersection of Rochester and Long Lake. But given the traffic that's already on both of those roads, the percentage increase that this development represents is pretty small. Having said that, we recognize that in terms of this being residential, the traffic study does something called a, uh, a trip distribution analysis where, okay, if people are living here, where are they likely going to be going to as they leave their homes and where are they coming back from? And it's usually driven by employment opportunities. So, it turns out a lot of this traffic is actually going to orientate towards Rochester Road. Uh, and it makes a lot of sense because it's the same sort of pattern that we see with the other residential properties along Long Lake in this segment. Um, and Brent mentioned that there's some concern about, well, relatively modest impact, but that's just one development, then you get another one, you get another one, everybody is little pieces of the pie and soon you got a big problem. And you don't really want to penalize the last guy in, but how do you account for all of the incremental impacts that accrue with every single development that comes through? And, uh, in this particular case, um, I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but the city has plans for a major road reconstruction of Rochester Road. They're going to do the next mile stretch north of, um, um, I'm trying, I got it, drew a blank on the name of the road.
What's going to go all the way across to Trinway, isn't it?
It's, it's, uh, Dillaway to, that's it, Dillaway to, um, whoops. Barkley, Barkley Drive to Trinway. So, it's another mile stretch where the road's going to be widened from the five lanes existing to a six lane boulevard. Um, the city's already gone through the environmental process, they've received their finding of no significant impact. The city's already gotten the funding to do the preliminary design. The design is far enough along that they've identified all of the right of way needed to be purchased. And, uh, I was just at a federal aid committee meeting, uh, last week and I have a copy actually of the transportation improvement program, which is how they pass out the money. And the city's been receiving money for right of way. They're going to receive money this year for right of ways, they're going to get money, additional monies next year for right of way. And if everything goes according to schedule, they're looking at construction funding being available in fiscal year 2024. Well, the fiscal year starts on October 1st. So, the reality is, we're probably looking at 2025 actual construction. And taking a five lane to a six lane boulevard is going to do a whole world benefit in terms of dealing with all of these incremental impacts from all of these, uh, additional developments that have been proposed in this generalized area. And when it comes to Glacier, or Glacier, we asked for a crash study because we wanted to know if there was a particular problem there in case we needed to try to do something before the road job comes through. And we did not see anything unusual. When the road job comes through, that will no longer be a full access intersection. That side street will be restricted to right in and right out. And then the turning traffic would have to use crossovers to get in and out. And there's absolutely no question, a boulevarded road is far, far safer than undivided five lane. So, any kind of residual safety issues are going to be taken care of by the fact that the boulevard's going in. And the nice thing about a boulevard also is that it's easier to time the traffic signals so that when you get going and you hit a green, you keep hitting greens. On a five lane, some side streets need signalization, but they're really odd spacing. So, it's almost impossible to keep progression going in both directions. With boulevarded roads, progression is very simple to accomplish, which means that the signal up at Long Lake should be able to provide lots of big gaps at Glacier, once the boulevard's in place. So, that, that was our mindset, the way we're approaching this particular development and what kind of potential impacts they had and how that fits into a broader picture of what the city's already doing for its major road system.
Thank you for that explanation. Appreciate it.
Quick question for?
Yes, Mr. Allen.
So, um, and maybe, uh, not much we can do, but eastbound traffic on Long Lake Road would bypass that during the traffic hour, right, at rush hour? To get to the right, uh, go to south Rochester?
There's always been a concern about the ability of savvy drivers being able to cut through to cut corners. It's always been an issue. Um, first and foremost, what you do is you make sure that the road names don't continue through. So, even though this is a, a bend, so you could say, well, it's extension of Glacier, so that's what it's going to be called when it comes out to Long Lake. No, don't do that. Don't ever do that because it just helps them better identify, oh, I can cut through here. Secondly, we, you've had some discussions about making some sort of a focal point at that bend in the road. Hmm, might want to put a roundabout in there. They come in all different sizes, including very small ones that would fit into a subdivision. And a lot of people don't really like the, if they have to, they'll do it, but they don't really like the idea they have to go three quarters of the way around the circle to make a left turn. So, that kind of is a, an additional type of, um, impediment to make it less attractive. And of course, once the boulevard is realized on this stretch of Rochester Road, it's only the eastbound to southbound that becomes an issue. It's, it's not really ever going to be the other direction.
Right, no, I know.
And at that point, private roads, um, they probably can talk to, uh, their traffic folks, they could talk to us. There's things you can do in terms of traffic calming so that it, uh, makes it, again, less attractive for people cutting through without being too much of an impediment to the people that actually live there.
What did you say? I didn't get that.
Traffic calming?
Speed bumps.
Speed bumps.
Humps.
That's one form. There's other things.
Yeah, I, I, okay.
You know, for example, they're talking about, well, the emergency access. Um, if that was only a pedestrian, if it was not also going to be used for fire apparatus, you could look at just very slightly bowing the road out and putting a median island in. You know, that, that little bit of, um, deflection?
Yeah.
Is in and of itself a form of slowing traffic down. So, there's a large toolkit associated with traffic calming. So, private roads, they can avail themselves of that if they'd like to.
So, um, my point is, you know, maybe, I think the applicant is here, so he heard the, all these things that we may want to do. How can we make sure that goes in the plan?
Well, the applicant is sitting behind Mr. Dearing, taking notes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Dearing? All right, thank you for showing up tonight.
My pleasure.
All right, I think we're ready to come back to the commission for a resolution or further discussion. Mr. Savadant?
Can I, uh, address one thing, maybe two things? So, there, there was a question asked, are, are the trees going to be coming down along this property line? I looked at the landscape plan, there are, this is pretty helpful actually because it's overlaid over aerial photography. You can kind of see some of the photography bleeding through here. So, there are some trees on, on the PUD side that are proposed to be removed, um, but these trees on the, on this, on the, this residential development side here will not be touched. But, but it looks to me, I looked at the utility plan and there's rear drains, um, that are proposed along here, you know, catch basins here and here and here and here. So, in the event of a, of one of the heavy rains that one of the residents referenced, uh, we don't want flooding to, you know, impact either property. So, rain will be picked up in these rear drains, go through pipes that go basically this way, then go down to the detention basin that's down here, which will be constructed prior to any of this happening because once, once the homes get started, are started to get constructed, the water, it's got to, the rainwater's got to be detained. So, so, one of the reasons we met on the, regarding the regional detention basin last week was, they want to move forward and they want to be able to, you know, drainage to be taken care of when they, when construction commences. So, um, I just wanted to make sure that everyone left here, we want to be fully transparent and accurate with our information. There's not a lot of trees along that property line, but, but you did also hear the applicant say that he's willing to, to plant some coniferous trees to kind of, to kind of, you know, replace those trees, so.
Thank you. Anyone on the commission wish to make a resolution or a postponement resolution or? I think the, uh, go ahead, Ms. Malala Hawley?
Um, I like a lot of the project ideas that they have come back with, but I'm hundred percent not convinced because there is still some work to be done. That's my two cents on why I would, I would not like to see a vote for this proposal but to postpone it and maybe revisit it again, if that is something that we are able to do.
Is that a motion?
You can take it as one.
Okay, I will take it as a motion and Mr. Krent seconds it. Any discussion? Mr. Savadant, you have a question or a comment?
I just want to make sure that Ms. Dufrain is comfortable, so it's postponement, but it's, it's postponed for the purpose of, of allowing the developer to consider a lot of the feedback. First of all, it was really constructive back and forth this evening. I think Mr. Lockren did a great job, um, standing at the hot seat there and, and there's a lot of really good constructive back and forth. But Ms. Dufrain, are you comfortable with, with the motion as stated or should it be tweaked?
I think it should be tweaked slightly. I think we need to give some direction to the applicant as to what the purpose of the postponement is. My suggestion was you relate it to the standards that, um, are required to be met.
And that is on which page?
Uh, well, there are, uh, well, the standards are in the zoning ordinance and there's, some of them are outlined within the proposed resolution, but I guess my, I'm saying that postponement should be based on, you know, direction given by this board to meet whatever standards you think that are not being met.
The, the standards are listed in 11.03B. We went over them this evening. I, I had some slides, Mr. Lockren mentioned them, I mentioned them. I think you can probably ref, reference the fact that they're in 11.03B. You don't have to specifically go through the whole list.
I assume that's part of the resolution then? Is that okay with, uh, our esteemed attorney?
Well, I guess at this point, we need to ask Ms. Arneke if she has, our recording secretary, if she has enough to record for a resolution.
I'm comfortable, again, listening to the meeting and, and doing my best to, uh, prepare the resolution.
That's fine.
Well, it could be an opportunity to, to respond or give us some feedback on this situation?
Uh, it, overall, I mean, again, I think we got a lot of, uh, great feedback again. Um, you know, there is some dichotomy on some comments to other comments, so that's where, where we get into a little bit of, okay, what do we do? But I think there was enough commonality that, that we can come back with, uh, some changes. Obviously, we'd like to revisit the site plan, get it to staff, um, and then, you know, try to turn around as quick as we can, as soon as we can, to the next planning commission, um, knowing that there's a process. I assume there wouldn't be another public hearing, notice period, so, um, you know, the hope was we could, we could address this, turn around, and, uh, I'll probably talk to Brian about some specifics, um, but I think we have a pretty good idea of what you're looking for.
Yeah, I think there's eight different people up here that there was some commonality in their comments to you, that obviously not everyone's going to agree with everything, but, uh, I think you'll get a pretty good idea of what you heard tonight, both from us and also from citizen comments as well.
Agreed.
Yeah, just, just to be clear, the, the memo that was prepared for this meeting was 18 pages long, I think. The next, the, the next memo is going to really focus on, on the changes. It's not going to be as, as lengthy because we've already, we've already done that.
Yes.
This is a process.
Thank you. All right, unless there's another point of discussion, I guess we're ready for the roll call.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Malala Hawley?
Yes.
Ms. Parakis?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Beekner?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, before people leave, so, the, we're required by law to have a public hearing for PUDs. We've held it, it's open and closed. Um, there'll be another planning commission meeting. It's not going to be a public hearing. Agendas are posted on the, on the, uh, online on the city website prior to the meeting, the Friday before the meeting. Meetings are the second and fourth Tuesday. Um, it's, takes 30 seconds to go online and click and look and, and we want you to participate, continue to come to the meetings. It's a simple click. If you have any questions, you have any difficulties, call the planning department, I'm, we'll, we'll answer any questions you have.
Yeah, and we always, we'll take public comment at the next meeting as well, so. Great, thank you.
Mr. Luffren, if I may as well, I work well with Ms. Shirk, your attorney. You may want to just give her a heads up on some of these changes that are going to be, maybe they can incorporate it in the next draft of the PUD. It'll just move that process along quicker if we get to that.
Okay, I will, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great night, thank you.
Good. All right, uh, next is public comment for items not on, no, public comment for items on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to make additional comments for what's already occurred tonight? Seeing none, then we will go to, uh, I don't know why it's not on here, but usually we do planning commission comments, so it's, are we allowed to do that even though it's not on the agenda?
That's, uh, yeah, we should have made that amendment at the beginning, Mr. Chairman, but you can, you can have that discretion if you want.
All right. I will start down here. Ms. Arneke, anything you'd like to share with the commission?
I have nothing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Other than tolerating our motions? Mr. Beekner?
The planning event at Mackinac in October, should we talk about it now or later?
That's probably offline, shouldn't it be?
We could, depending what the question is.
I mean.
Should we be talking about details of?
You mean about where you're supposed to meet and all that kind of stuff?
Who's going to drive there? We can do that together.
Yeah, you can do that. Probably offline. I don't know how we should do that, but.
Because there's, I think, three commissioners going and then, uh, Mr. Savadant's going and then Mr. Carlyle will be there, so you guys can all make your plans on which brewery Mr. Savadant's going to take you two on Mackinac Island, so.
There is one.
Yes, only one?
One?
On the island.
Okay. Ms. Malala Hawley, any comments?
Um, I do, and I just want to point out regarding the sledding hill. I'm just going to go back to that point to just keep that, uh, point here regarding section 11.03 standard.
We really shouldn't be talking about something when the applicant's left the room.
I see.
If it's related to what the, the pub, the item that was on the agenda, you can't talk about it now?
How can I address this particular question, though?
Is that a concern about the actual language?
Uh, it's the question of using the zoning ordinance to help the applicant look into, um, the proposal that they had today.
I don't think we can talk about that at this time, so.
Something that should have been addressed when the applicant was present.
Is there another way to address this? Can I do a comment?
Send an email to Mr. Brent, Mr. Savadant?
Okay, and that can be forwarded?
It'll be, it'll be discussed by this board again publicly.
Yeah, we'll have another opportunity to discuss this matter. It's just we can't do it while the applicant?
Okay, then we'll save it for later, no worries. Thank you.
The, the concern is that, that we've already discussed it publicly and the applicant and the residents have left, so we, we want to be transparent to, to the process.
I understand, thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Hudson, I guess.
Nothing, thank you.
No, not for me.
Ms. Parakis?
I'm old set.
Mr. Roman? Mr. Tagle? Ms. Dufrain? Mr.?
I want to thank Mr. Dearing for being here this evening. Both Mr. Dearing and Sarah Merrill from OHM, I, in my opinion, do a really good job of explaining really complicated traffic matters in simplistic terms that even simpletons like me can understand. So, thank you, Steve.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
The only comment I have is, uh, one or two commissioners have approached me about maybe sometime in the new year. sometime in the new year, as we approach the end of this year, having some special study sessions where we could just devote ourselves to maybe talking about, like, the future of Troy from an economic and demographic point of view. I don't think we need to go back to the old days when we did them every month, but maybe a couple of times a year, and maybe we could have Ms. Dufrain spend a time with us talking about, like, Open Meetings Act and some of the other legal restrictions that we have to deal with as commissioners.
Probably time to do a refresher on those.
Yeah, I think that's the.
Another idea that we have is, is, you know, we talk about, we talk about some of the new residential products that are coming online, we talk about the office market and it, and I think there's, there's some value in setting up, like, a few field trips to look at some different residential housing types that are out there, some, like, there's Niduzan apartments, for example. There's some, there's some projects that have been developed recently that I think there'd be a lot of value to visit. And, you know, also maybe some office space, and just to see kind of what's out there. I think we talk about these things, or also, we review site plans where we're looking at the drawing and, and we're looking at the outside, and we, we, I think there's value in getting inside and seeing what's out there. Just my thought.
Thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, we are adjourned.